Thank you. Good evening, thank you everyone for coming. This is the November 14, 2018, meeting of the Planning Board. And the first item on today's agenda is a Master Plan Steering Committee update. Mr. Pember, welcome back. What do we got?
George, can I just ask you to come up here, please? Elaine said that it's very hard to pick up people in the audience, particularly at the very beginning of the meeting, I don't know why that makes any difference, but...
Because nobody's all worked up yet.
Yeah. Anyway, we're still arguing over the goals, the mission statement. We've kind of got a question. We're still taking a little bit of a deal on that.
Is there, are there particular points that you're going back and forth on?
Not necessarily, because what they do is they literally write everything. So, every single thing gets reviewed and commented on, so, and there were comments on almost everything.
But, but the goals, actually, the goals themselves, each goal did get approved.
Yeah, I think the goals did-
The vision statement is still-
Right. The vision statement is still a little fuzzy. And now we're about, I think the next meeting will probably launch into action items, which ought to be a lot of fun, and that will be a lot more specific. One thing that I would point out is that Carrie, who's not a member of the committee but was there, I thought made an excellent point, which is that in Northborough, there's a tremendous emphasis on the quality of the school system. And even though the master plan isn't necessarily a school master plan, I think it's important that we be sure that there's stuff in there that basically emphasizes how much we value our schools and what we want to do. So, I would hope that as we progress in this, that we put lots of stuff in that particular section.
Excellent. When is the next public hearing that people can attend? Is there one scheduled?
Well, the next Steering Committee meeting is January 3rd.
Okay.
And we will be having another public forum, but that won't be until probably late winter, early spring. We haven't scheduled a specific date yet for that.
Okay.
But there will be another public forum, but the Steering Committee, again, is January 3rd. And the Steering Committee's homework right now is, it's actually due Friday, is for everyone to take a first, you know, look at the recommendations slash action steps, we keep using those two terms, you know, they mean the same thing in the master plan world. So, the recommendations, like George said, they, and everyone has a copy tonight, and you have a PDF also in your email box. So, the committee members, anyone, you know, that wants to have, you know, take an initial crack at those, for the, for the, but the committee members specifically had homework to provide comments by Friday.
Okay. Were there any results from the survey, second survey?
Yes, and they, if they're not posted, they'll be posted shortly, because this week, that was supposed to be posted, or will be posted, and the, the goals and the vision statement will be, the finalized version of everything will be posted, or uploaded to the website, I should say.
Anything else for me?
No.
Michelle?
So, yeah, Carrie did make a good point about the schools, but Rick Leaf also gave input about, as well as the member of the school committee who's on the board, the master plan committee, that the school is in its separate entity, and they have their own, sort of-
Strategic.
-strategic planning and everything, so we don't want to be in conflict with them, we want to make sure that we're synchronized and on the same page with them. But, yeah, mentioned it throughout, so we talked a little bit about that. And she's gonna go off and make sure that the master plan reflects exactly what the school committee is heading for.
So, there's gonna be some coordination between the two?
Yeah. And then, right here, on the goals and drafts, definitely, the priorities that we have down here are something that the committee worked on and has been in full agreement with. It's all the bullets underneath that we were just presented with, that we really haven't had a chance to go through and say whether we like or dislike, or whether we think this is a good bullet to have, or a good initiative to take place for the town. So, even though you see it here, it really hasn't not been discussed, it was just an accumulation of what was happening, or what the input they got throughout the interviews and all the questionnaires. They're just sort of, it was a brainstorm of everything, really is what it is.
So, the parts that are in bold, the headings in bold are-
All in agreement.
-what you guys have worked on and are finalized.
Yeah. The bullets underneath are just, they're sort of giving, it's accumulation of what they are gonna recommend, and we may go down at first under land use, and you have five of them, and just say, "Well, we think the town should only work on these three," and then the other two sort of don't get accepted into the master plan. But that discussion needs to take place in the next meeting.
Right. Wow, excellent. You guys have done a lot of work so far.
And then, as George was saying, as you're going through the goals, and then all the action items, you keep on going back to your, you know, master plan overview statement, and it changes, because you notice that this changes, which then goes up and changes your overview statement, your mission statement.
So, there's room for the mission statement to continue changing?
Yeah. Sentences are going to the top, sentences are being deleted, sentences are going to the bottom.
It's funny, some people still want bullets versus sentences.
Yeah.
Fascinating.
I think the overriding comment was, keep it as short as you can, because initially, when we looked at something, it was very, very lengthy, run-on sentences and the whole bit, and just, it was too much.
Right. Okay. Amy?
I couldn't attend the meeting, so I don't, I'm not sure what happened at the meeting, but I know Carrie and Anthony were there, so I'd like to defer my questions to them if they have anything to add.
Do you guys have anything to add?
No, go ahead, Carrie.
No, go ahead, that's fine.
I was just gonna say, I mean, so at this point, it really is, I thought there was a lot of wordsmithing going on. I think the goals and the vision statement are in check with what the residents have said. I think when we get into the meat of it, it's gonna be the action items, so that's when I think it'll get interesting.
Right. Excellent.
My thought was related a little bit to the survey, when we started to look at different terms, and thinking about how residents actually define those things. So, words like affordability, or small-town feel, just trying to figure out, what does that actually mean to people? And I think someone commented that night, I think it was actually Henry, who said, you know, "Do we want a vibrant downtown, or an attractive downtown?" And that's something, sort of parsing out, what is that, what do those words mean to people? And I don't think there was a, we talked maybe about a survey, or something, another survey, I don't know if that'll come to fruition, but just trying to figure out what those things mean. And then, along the lines with the goals, the one thing that kind of stood out to me a little bit was that, I think it was Jeff, who just made a comment, that the, some of the recommendations have things like establish a zoning district, or establish specific zoning, and I think he kind of cautioned, and I was glad he said this, that it's not to establish zoning, it's to recommend researching zoning that supports X, Y, Z goal, and then work with a specific entities, like the Planning Board, who would then go and develop that zoning. So, I think that was a good word of caution, in terms of developing these next steps here, not to make such specific recommendations like that. That was my interpretation.
Excellent.
Can I add one thing, too? When you were talking about definitions, another thing would be like variety. One of the questions was about variety of housing, but variety means different things to different people, like, if you picture a variety of housing, it could be, "Are you thinking I want to split the Cape of Colonial?" Or variety, are you talking duplex, multifamily, or single-family? Like, I think if we go into another survey, some of those questions have to be asked, but more specific, because when I talked to people who took the original survey, they were confused by the questions. And some of the committee members were confused by the questions, so I think there need to be more specific questions, that you understand what's really being asked for variety, or for, like you said, vitality, or attractiveness, or-
Or vibrant, I think it was.
Vibrant.
Vibrancy. Is there, Kathy, I don't remember, when we did the work to bring in the consultant, was there a specific number of surveys that we contracted for?
We originally scoped three surveys in three public forums. And, and we've, you know, just loosely talked with them at the master plan Steering Committee meetings, that, you know, there may be a need for a fourth survey and/or a fourth public forum. So, we'll sort of just see, you know, how that goes after the January meeting. But, but, you know, it's been noted, certainly by the, you know, consultants, that, because we'll definitely be doing a third survey, I just don't know what the, if it'll, I don't know if it's gonna be specific to a topic, or I don't know where, yet. But, but, you know, things will definitely be defined better.
Okay.
And, sort of like, you know, in these terms, or, you know, this is what we mean when we say variety, or this is what we mean when we say affordable, or, you know, this is, if we talk about a conservation restriction, this is what it is, you know, versus an easement or something. But, they'll, you know, they'll be better, they'll be, things will be defined.
Okay.
And one of the things, being on the Planning Board, too, a lot of times, we diverted things, when we talked about duplexes, we said, "Oh, let's follow up with the master plan." You know, what do people want to see, what neighborhoods, but those questions haven't been asked yet.
And then, finally, I think Norm Corbin made a good comment, he's from the Historical Commission, and thank you, Kathy, for emailing that master plan out. For anyone who can't sleep late at night, Kathy has a copy, a electronic copy that you can read on your iPad. But he did make a point about trying to go back and look it over to see what we've been able to accomplish in 20 years, and where were those pockets that we need to look and focus on a little bit more.
Right.
That was a really good point, and so, if you're up late at night, you want to read it.
Yeah, one of the things, it was actually conversations with Amy, and conversations that I had with Norm, about, you know, they wanted to electronic, have an electronic version, because they still have a few paper copies left, but, so anyway, so we, you know, we got that accomplished. But the, one of the things that I'm gonna do for the next master plan Steering Committee meeting, is to, you know, go through the 1997 master plan, and look at what was carried out. And, and one of the things already, that actually Rick Leaf has pointed out to me, because he took a look at it right away, is one of the main topics that was followed in the past 20 or so years has been open space. And, you know, the master plan talks about, the 97 master plan talks about, you know, the creation of a committee, you know, get a group of focused residents, you know, together, and the open space committee was formed. And, you know, these are some of the, you know, the suggestions in the master plan, where, you know, these should be some of the goals of the master, of the open space committee. And so, and then the funding source for the open space, and that came about through the Community Preservation Act. And so, so once you have a committee plus money, a lot can happen. And that certainly has happened in this community. I mean, we've, we've bought, you know, can't give you the acreage off the top of my head, but we have bought significant parcels of open space, and also accepted a couple donations. You know, some of our purchases, you know, might have been, you know, 16 acres versus, you know, 100 acres, but they were very meaningful parcels, as far as either habitat protection, for habitat protection, and/or, you know, budding additional, I mean, excuse me, existing open space, whether it was owned by the state or the town. So, so that's a, that's a huge takeaway from the master plan, sort of just right off the bat, as far as people, you know, always say, "Well, did this, you know, did the last document sit on the shelf?" And then, one of the things that I think even in the very first master plan that I worked on when I was here, you know, there's a continuous theme about the downtown. But, you know, again, you know, you have, you know, the, the open space just has, has had such a great success, you know, it took them a while to, you know, get up and get going, and then the CPA came in, you know, about 10 years after they were created. So, you know, they didn't run off the bat, you know, start acquiring open space, but sort of laid the groundwork for how they were going to acquire open space, and what spaces would you look at, and, you know, what parcels would you look at, so. So anyways, that's, I'll have a more full report for the master plan Steering Committee.
Okay.
I read both, too, and I agree with that. The major thing was open space. I think another thing that was mentioned was the senior center that we did, they were looking for a senior center, and that came about. But those are the two main things I noticed in the downtown. I think we have to, even the old action items seem like they would work today.
Anything else from the side, on master plan? No, you guys go. Anything on the side from master plan? Anything else, George?
All set, thank you.
Thank you for being here. Our next meeting, well, you guys don't have a meeting before the next Planning Board meeting.
Right. Right, we're on an every-other-month basis.
All right, so we'll see you in January.
Okay.
Thank you for your help. Have a good evening.
Thank you, George.
Right on time, look at that.
I also want to make a comment about the master plan, just one little thing.
Sure.
The term affordable housing is a definition that to each person means something different. We say affordable housing, if you're in the, if you're looking at $600,000, $700,000 housing, they're $400,000 affordable, but if you're in the 200, $300,000, $200,000 range, affordable means, now, I, I think the research I've done, affordable is defined by the real estate profit values in a town, or in a state. Is it statewide, or is it town-wide, the word affordable?
George, do you know the answer to that?
I can't answer that.
I don't, I haven't-
I think it's what you qualify for affordable housing, is your income guidelines that are determined by the state.
Okay, because that was in the, in the questionnaire, that was the questions people filling out the forms had.
Right.
What do you call affordable?
So, that was a loose term that a lot of people were using, I don't think they're using it as loosely anymore, because they understand that a $500,000 house is not affordable, nor maybe is a $400,000 house as affordable. So, it's, so, again, it's to each community, and it's very subjective to the community that you're in. So, I think when we do talk about the affordable guidelines, they're talking about whether you qualify in the medium income for it. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you again. All right, next item on the agenda is the continued public hearing for 222 West Main Street, site plan approval, special permit, common driveway and special permits for two family dwelling units. The developer has asked that we continue this public hearing to December 4 at 7:15 PM, and so that's what we're gonna do. If anybody's here for that public hearing, it's not gonna be held tonight, we're moving it to December 4 at 7:15.
I have a question to give.
About that?
Can I ask a question on that?
Not if it has anything to do with the applicant or the application. If it has something to do with moving the public hearing, you can ask that.
No procedure, I just want a no procedure.
Yeah.
I understand there's gonna be an engineering review of this site sometime in this week.
Okay.
Okay, but it still comes back to the Planning Board. I mean, this, this doesn't approve it period, it still has to come back through the Planning Board.
Nothing's been approved by the Planning Board. So, there's, right now, there's an open application, Mr. Abou can either withdraw it, he can continue forward with what he has, or he can substitute something else in its place. But, right now, nothing's been done.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. And with that, we move on to old and new business, so-
So, do we have to make a motion to continue it?
No, we don't have to make a motion to continue, right?
Yes, you should.
Oh, we do?
Yep.
Did we do it last time?
I think we did.
I think we have it in the minutes that way, yep.
All right, motion to continue the public hearing for 222 West Main Street to December 4 at 7:15 PM? Anybody?
Make a motion to continue the public hearing for 222 West Main Street? I didn't know if I was supposed to say so hard.
You could.
To December 4th.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, we've got some minutes, let's see, the minutes from October 16 are probably easier than the minutes from August. Does everybody have a chance to read them? They came out with the August ones, sorry. Somebody read them.
On the October 16th version that you have in front of you, includes a couple of changes or revisions that Carrie had made, so that's the, and Teresa, I know you didn't have any revisions, so, it's just YouTube that I heard from, so I just printed Carrie's version, so that's what you've got in front of you.
Oh, I didn't see these edits.
I think there's only a couple right there.
Yeah, that was the one.
On page 6.
Amy, did you read these minutes?
I did.
Any changes?
No changes.
Okay. Shelley, looking at them. Anthony, did you have a chance to read them?
I did. No changes.
You're good?
Yep, we're talking about the October minutes, right?
Yep.
I just wanted to review Carrie's edit. Yep. Okay.
All right. Anybody want to make a motion?
I make a motion to accept the October 16th minutes with Carrie's edits, and these are your August ones, right? You didn't have any edits to the-
I don't have any edits to the October one.
Okay. With Carrie's edits that were presented tonight.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I had a ton of edits to the August one. Do we want to address these at our next meeting, or do we want to do these now?
So, what I had done, just, and again, I don't know if people had a chance or not, but Teresa, the edits that you had made, I sent out to people today, and that's the version that you have in front of you. I just thought that would be easier, just like I did with the October ones with Carrie's edits. So, you have the August ones before you.
There were some, there were some things in the minutes that, honest to God, made no sense to me, and I don't have time to go back and review tape on this. So, I made notes in the margin, and I think, just so that we have a set of minutes that is functionally usable and literate for the public that weren't here and don't have access to YouTube, I think it's worth our while to take this back and work on it until the next meeting, so that we have a final draft of these minutes that makes sense to put on the website. Because I, this took me, I spent an extraordinary amount of time going through this yesterday, and there's just a lot of stuff in here that I think, really, we need to make sure we've got the right information.
Well, some of these questions are answered. I went back to the tapes, and I pulled out, like, for example, including provisions for what was a question, so I pulled that. There's a comment made about something that was a question, if it was, you weren't sure it was actually said, so I pointed out in the tape where it was said. And then, some of these things are grammatical corrections of what people said, I mean, they used the words they used, we can't really go and grammatically correct people. And the other thing was-
Well, hold on, to, minutes aren't a transcript, minutes are a summation. And so, if somebody said, "I would like to speak to the issue of the sidewalk," the minutes don't have to say that she spoke to the sidewalk.
Oh, that reminds me.
But that's, that's, it can say that she spoke regarding sidewalk issues.
Right.
Because you're presenting a document that's now gonna be memorialized in the town hall forever.
I don't think we take that same approach to any other minutes, but if we do want to take that-
I haven't read any other minutes that have this issue, because all the other minutes that staff produce are summations and not transcripts. And this is the, this, we're going all the way back to the beginning on this.
I don't agree. But the other thing about the sidewalk was Michelle, you may asked about a comment that Michelle made on sidewalks, and that was, there was an awkward placement, because it's an audience commenting that wasn't included in the minutes. So, when Michelle said she agreed with your recommendation on sidewalks, it was just an odd placement, but that was a recommendation that she made.
So, some of the information, I think, has to come from Fred. Because there's a couple things in here about conforming, the maximum flow rate, flow rate and the sewer rate appeared to conform, period, but I don't know what it's conforming to. And then, restrictions for the common driveway should include provisions. Provisions for what?
That's what I said, that's what I answered. So, I went back to the tape and I pulled-
Okay, that's what you answered.
I mean, it's not, we can continue to hold them, but it's just, we're adding a level of scrutiny that we've added to no of this at a minute, so it doesn't make sense.
If, if my name's on the minutes, they have to make sense. I don't know. So, I will find time over the next, oh, where do we meet, in December now? Sometime between now and the December meeting to clean them up, but there is no way I was gonna get them done for tonight, so. All right, then we will move those over to the next meeting, and then we have various goals for everybody to look at.
Well, can I ask a question about the minutes?
Yeah.
And I don't know if this is, I mean, I know, because Carrie, you went off the tape, right?
I did.
So, the, the original minutes that I had done was, was just to keep us moving, and, you know, to keep you on time with your minutes. At this point, do you, do you want me, although it seems redundant, do you want me to have Elaine go back and create a set of minutes?
No, I don't think that Elaine needs to create another set of minutes for this. I, I mean, we'll be able to use these eventually, they just have to make sense.
Okay.
Because some of the language that's used in here just doesn't.
Okay.
And that's-
So, are you looking for, I mean, if there's questions in there about what Fred said, and we can, you know, take things off of the, I mean, out of the file, if that, if he's referencing drainage or something, or calculations.
Yeah, I think he is. I think it would make sense to make sure that with this, there's a couple of pieces within these minutes that reference Fred's overview, and I know that normally, our minutes would just refer to the various letters that he's referring to, because, because those get incorporated into whatever the decision is, so they're available anyway. But they're laid out here with specificity, and if we're gonna do that, we've got to make sure we've got all the information. So, yeah, why don't, why don't we have him just take a look at that part, because he could probably answer it very quickly, so.
I think the minutes were good, but if you want to update them. I know there have been some things I've said that haven't made sense, and I've gone back and seen the minutes and had to fix them, but it was because of the same thing. When I said something in the public, it made sense to me, but when it got translated to the minutes, it didn't make sense. So, I mean, I think they're very minor, but I thought Carrie did a good job with the minutes.
My concern is that in, in the future, when somebody goes back and looks at these minutes, for whatever reason-
Yep.
-that they're gonna cock their head sideways, and their ears are gonna perk up like my dog, when you look at the dog and say, "We'll go for a ride?" You know, that's, and that's not the way people should be looking at minutes. It's, these are, these are documents that people will rely on in the future, they should understand them when they read them, so.
Right. But, I don't think they were that bad.
So, Kathy, I'll do a little bit more work on it and send it to you, and then you can-
Okay, well, I just didn't know if you were looking for me to insert things, or-
No, I'll do a little more, I'll do a little more work on them, based upon what we have. I just figured I get the first, my first round of edits out. The, we have some, do we have any article language for any of the-
No, not yet. Bob and I are working on, he's working on some of his own, some, some article, a couple articles that he wants to bring to town meeting. And it's really not anything that, that you as a Planning Board or the ZBA deals with, but it's things that we deal with in-house, such as the sale of Christmas trees, and flowers, and roadside wreaths, you know, people, so, not a big deal to any of you, but, but as Bob says, he doesn't, he doesn't want to be the one to shut down the lemonade stand, and, and they really, we don't have anything in our bylaws addressing that, so we, we, we sort of, you know, talk about it every year, and, and so we want to put something in place, just about seasonal sales, or something like that, so, work on that. He's got some information from a few towns about the electronic messaging centers, same with me, so we're putting that together, as far as giving you some more definitions, and also limiting those electric, at this point, based on your conversation from last time, limiting them to the highway business zone and to the industrial zone. And they would be prohibited everywhere else. And then, DEP, I'm getting some language from them about hazardous waste facilities. And in talking to the various communities, you know, just because one town did something doesn't mean, I don't want anyone to say, "Oh, because Northborough did it, we're gonna copy Northborough's bylaws," so everyone's unique. But, but every community that I've spoken to, their bylaw was, like, very specific to something, you know, it was, it was almost more of a reaction, which sadly, a lot of zoning bylaws are, you know, something happens in your town, and then it's like, "Whoops, we should have had a zoning bylaw for it." So, so I'm just trying to get some more information from DEP. So, we'll have- So we'll have drafts for you in December and then probably into January and, you know, but we'll get the spots reserved. I mean, it, it'll all work out, you know, so don't have any fear about that, you know, these things, whatever you decide, you know, aren't going to get on the board because they will. And then I brought Amy's suggestions about the non-conforming language to the zoning board of appeals at their October meeting. So they're going to take a look at the, you know, literature that Amy had put together and we're going to talk about, I, I have it just, as I have it on your agenda, I have town meeting on their agenda too. So at the November meeting, they, I asked them just to come back with their thoughts or, you know, concerns or, you know, do they agree with it? Do they not agree with it? You know, get some feedback from them before we proceed, you know, with, with writing anything for a zoning bylaw. And then there was one other one that I was looking at that...
You were looking at term limits on appointments to committees?
Oh, yeah, so as far as the term limits, they're, it's, it's probably about like, two-thirds of the boards have term limits, so for the most part...
In town?
Yes.
Okay.
So they have, like, someone will be appointed, because most of the boards are appointed, there's only three elected, school committee, planning board and board of selectmen. So the rest of the boards are appointed. And they, most of them are appointed by the board of selectmen, but in your case, you appoint the design review committee and then in some cases, the town moderator appoints some of the committees and/or appoints some of the members of the committees. So, so maybe not the whole committee, but, you know, the moderator might have one or two appointments and then the planning board would have an appointment, the board of selectmen would have an appointment. So those generally are three-year terms. There's nothing magic about three years, there's nothing in the state statute that says it has to be three years because I know last meeting, you know, some of you talked about five years, some of you talked about three years, six years. And then there are some boards though that don't have term limits. And then there are some boards that don't have a limit at all, but there's a limit to the committee. So once the, sort of once the mission statement of the committee is finished, then that board kind of dissolves.
Like the master plan steering committee?
Exactly, yep, exactly, yeah. None, none of the, no one has a term limit on that. So, so that's, that's what I found out. So for the most part, there are term limits.
The, so tell me again, the term limits, those that do have term limits, they're three years or three cycles?
They're, no, three years.
Okay.
And then you can get reappointed. You know, I mean, there's, there's plenty of people that, that, you know, that opt to, you know, either A, ask to be reappointed or, I mean, typically the...
Oh, okay.
So the, so the board, so the term, and actually, you know what, that would, I'm glad you brought that up because that was confusing at first when I asked the question of the town clerk's office and the board of selectmen's office because the answer right away was, no, nobody has term limits. And I thought, oh, okay, no, that can't be because I, because I know some boards have term limits. It would just, the ones I've, you know, that I've experienced or worked with. So then I rephrased it and I meant not, not that you, not that you can only serve one term or two terms or three terms. Rephrased it to say, you know, when you're appointed to a board, how many years do you serve? And it's generally three years and then nobody has a limit on how many times you could be reappointed.
Okay, so there are no true term limits?
Yes, correct.
There's, but there's, every term has a limitation in, on some of these committees?
Yes, yes, and it's generally...
And there's specified time periods.
Right, and again, it's generally three years, but that, there's no magic to three years.
So if we decided to make design review the outlier and say, well, actually it wouldn't be an outlier, we could just say that anybody who serves on DRC serves two years or three years and then after that you have to reapply for the position, then we open it up, all this, all, we'd probably, I assume that we would want to stagger that so that we don't have all five coming due at the same time.
Correct.
But we could do that and then open it up to members of the public or within the professions that we're seeking, get new applicants in, who wants to serve and then...
Well, yeah, but I mean, I have...
There's an opportunity for the same person to be reappointed again, but it also invites anybody else who might want to serve to have the opportunity to apply and present as to why they should do it instead of the other person.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I would imagine you would give everyone who's on the board the option of, of, you know, remaining on the board for, for however you're going to do a term, you know, unless you're looking at doing a clean slate? Is that what you're thinking about?
I'm not looking at...
Oh, okay.
Just thinking out loud.
Because I, again, I would imagine that you would give the, you know, people on the board the opportunity to, you know, say whether they wanted to, you know, stay on the board, give them a term and then, and then you start, you know? You know, with changing your, you know, when someone comes up, when, you know, three years comes up or two years or one year, you know? We had that on the community preservation, I think on all the committees, it's staggered like that. So again, not everybody is up at the same time.
Do, do any of the, sorry, do any of the committees have, with multiple members, have certain members who get three years and certain, or certain slots that get three years and certain slots that only get two years or one year? Or do they all have to be the same length?
Yeah, not that I'm aware of. I mean, it's, there's no difference between the one member to the next.
Sorry.
So Kathy, the way it's always been, because I've been on a lot of these boards is, and I've primarily been on being appointed by the planning board and when I came off of the planning board, they just reappointed, put another planning board on member. But had I been on just as a member of the public and my three-year term came up, you're recommending now that, you know, that person just stays on unless they say, "Hey, I'm tired, I've got things to do on a Thursday and I can no longer attend." Whereas were you suggesting or a new way of looking at it is when that three-year term comes up, that person plus anyone else in the public who's interested going on that committee? So it's going to be like an interviewing, a constant interviewing process of all the boards and committees?
Well, the way the town handles it now is the, anybody who's on a board, like I'll give you an example, the zoning board of appeals. So they're all staggered terms just because it started way back when that, you know, the, as the, yeah, I don't even know how it was done. You know, I mean, we've had a zoning board of appeals since the 50s along with the planning board, so I don't know how it was originally done. But again, not, five members don't come up at the same time. So, but anytime an appointment comes up, whether it's on the conservation, I'll just give you the ones that I'm familiar with, conservation commission, earth removal, CPC, the, the person gets a letter from the town administrator's office asking them if they want to be considered to be reappointed. And if the person says yes, then they're reappointed. If the person says no, then it's opened up to the public as there's now a vacancy on the board.
Is that a town policy for the committees?
It, it's a policy, yeah, it's a policy. I don't know that it's in the code or the charter, I don't know where it would be, code maybe, but I just know that that's how all the reappointments work.
Is that for committees that selectmen oversee or is that...
That's everyone. Because like I said, the town, the town moderator appoints, you know, several people to several committees. So everyone is given the chance to, they sent, the letter is sent out in April, May, asking if you, you know, your term is up, your term is coming up, you know, the end of June or something, I don't know when they run, but I just know that these letters go out in the late spring. And then asking them if they want to, you know, continue on and then if they say yes, then that's, that's good. And then whoever's the reappointing authority, like every, you know, three years, Fred Philcox, his appointment is up on, on, on the earth removal board, on the earthwork board. And he's, the planning board's appointee. So every year, a letter gets sent to Fred asking him if he wants to stay, you know, if he wants to serve another three-year term. He has said yes every time and you reappoint him. You've never opened up, you know, you've never said, you know, no, we, we want someone else or anything like that. It's, it's never worked that way. So the, so the person who's asked, you know, whose term is up, asks if they want to be reappointed. They, most of the times they do, sometimes people will say no, like you said, Michelle, they'll just say, "I'm done" or, you know, "Too, you know, too hectic with my kid's schedule" or, you know, "My job's changed" or whatever. And then if someone doesn't want to get reappointed, then, you know, the position is advertised on the town's website.
Okay. Carrie?
Do I have a question?
Do you have any questions or anything on this because it's, I think it was your suggestion?
Yes, thank you for investigating that. So it was confusing with the limits versus the actual length of the term.
I didn't really, yeah.
So, yeah, I think, I mean, based on the current bylaw, I don't know to what extent we need to add a whole policy. I feel like maybe that's a separate document, I'm not sure, is there a separate, the policy would support the bylaw if we wanted to set up?
Well, I, yeah, I don't know, actually. I mean, I, you know, there may be a policy, the board of selectmen may have written a policy years ago or the town administrator, I don't, I don't know. I didn't, I didn't look into that as to whether there was a policy. But if you wanted to add term limits to the design review committee, we would have to go to the town meeting with the zoning bylaw because it's in the zoning bylaw.
Correct, yeah, okay. So then the pieces that I was interested there would be establishing a term of appointment and then speaking to reappointments. And that's the piece where I think I'm, I had something different in mind in terms of people not just getting a letter that says, "Do you want to renew?" But it more goes back into the public, the same application process to start. So it would go back to advertising, making a call, seeing if anybody's interested and sort of evaluating the available candidates and then making the appointment at every, whatever, one, two, three years. So that's what, that's what I had in mind when I said reappointment.
So that, I'm not saying that's right or wrong, that's just different than what, than, than what the town does now. So I don't know that I, and I, I guess I'll ask the town administrator's office, you know, I, I don't know who makes that decision. You know, if one board changes, handles their reappointments different than the way the rest of the town does.
It could be that the, because the planning board is uniquely situated where we have control over this one committee, then the town administrator's office, I assume, doesn't get involved in this?
No.
For our board, for our...
No, but I'm just looking at policy for the town.
Yeah, so I guess the question is, if, if we've got that authority over this one committee, is there a uniform policy if we're going to do term limits? Is there something we have to be following even though that's out here in town administrator land and not down here in planning board land? Is there a requirement of uniformity in the policy or does it not matter because it's subcommittees of the board?
I can, I'll check. I mean, I would, my assumption is, is there needs to be a uniformity. Why, why would one board be different than all the rest, but...
Right, because you want your people to live here to operate, you know, and to understand what, what happens here and you want to operate uniformly, but...
But I think it's important to give outside people a chance. Like there are some people who say, okay, maybe there's someone that's been on the design review for 20 years and there's someone on the ZBA that's been on the, the ZBA for 20 years, but they're going to get their letter at the end of the year and say, "Okay, I still want that space." It doesn't give anyone ever a chance to become part of the board.
And that's true, but I'll, and Michelle can back me up on this. We have begged people, we've had that design review committee in place since 1988 and we have had open seats on that board for probably like a couple of years at a time. And we have begged people to come on that board and the same with the zoning board of appeals. I mean, we just appointed an alternate, we, and that position was open almost a year and a half. And, and it was advertised everywhere. So, so I get what you're saying, but I'm just giving you the reality. There's not people tripping over themselves to volunteer to be on boards. That's just the reality that we find as when, when we're trying to fill positions on boards.
We may want to consider for DRC if we're going to do any changes for that committee to perhaps think about alternates? Because I think part of, the, the question partly arises because of attendance?
And, yep, alternates I'll look into too because there is a, there's a state statute that has to be adopted at town meeting in order for the town to have alternates. The planning board has never in the past been interested in alternates, so you don't have alternates, but the zoning board of appeals was, so that went to town meeting. And I think that they're the only board right now that has alternates. So they, they were interested years ago in potentially having alternates because a lot of their votes have to be a super majority, you know, have to be four out of five. So they were concerned that if someone, you know, didn't show up, then, you know, either you have to postpone, it's up to the applicant. So you can either go with four people or you postpone it and you wait till the five members are there. So they, they put alternates in place, you know, several years ago. So I'll, I'll have to check to see whether, I don't even know if a design review committee is, is, you know, every town calls it something different. The towns that have them, it's not a mandatory board to have. So I don't know if alternates come into place, but I'll check that.
Okay, cool.
And then I can check what the policy of the, you know, of what the town is in general as far as how to, you know, fill vacancies. And not fill vacancies, um, do the reappointments.
Reappointments, okay.
Okay, so I just want to clarify, the, at the heart of my request, what I'm trying to get at is back in August, we had a situation where some comments were made that made us wonder about if we, what's the process behind changing our committee members if we wanted to do so? And we discovered in that conversation, there was no process. So there's no place for us to evaluate performance or evaluate candidate, continued candidacy. There's no stopping point for us to reflect. So the heart of my request is partly to establish some sort of method or tool that allows us, if there is some sort of issue or even if there's not, what's that stopping point for us to evaluate performance or whatever the case? The other, the other heart of it is just, you know, we've seen a trend and increased, tonight's not, not as many people, but we've seen an increased interest in residents getting involved and, you know, maybe historically that hasn't been the case, but if more and more people want to get involved, I think that if we give them more opportunities, and that's important to do because, you know, we keep putting the same people and saying, "Well, nobody's volunteering," but we're not giving chances either. So maybe we, we reach the, we put the olive branch first to say, we are giving opportunities and we hope you take them. So that's the heart of it. I don't know the right answer, the right policy, but those are, if that helps to define a little bit.
Just keep moving forward on this and see what we can do with that in mind. So it seems like everything that we discussed at the last meeting relative to town meeting issues is all sitting on your desk, Kathy?
Yep.
It is.
I have one other small thing I emailed to Kathy, just, it has to do with non-conforming end signs. So I thought it could be added in, a lot of towns have it, where if there is a sign that becomes non, it has to conform. So a lot of times...
Wait, hold on a second, what do you mean?
I was just passing it down.
If there's, but you say if there's a sign that becomes non-conforming, it has to conform, why?
If there are any changes made, like if somebody changes, so say there's a non-conforming sign at CVS and CVS leaves and Walgreens comes in, they, the sign actually has to conform with the bylaw once they leave.
It's, um... So eliminating the grandfathered status for the new law?
For signs, and if you read a lot of sign bylaws, just changing the words of the sign make it have to follow the bylaw again the way I read other bylaws. So just because, did I pass down enough?
Yeah.
Just because someone has a sign that's non-conforming, if it changes to a new business, it has to, if they change the wording on the sign, it just has to go back into conformity. When I was looking at sign bylaws, almost every sign bylaw talked about bringing signs into conformity.
Can you think of a sign in town that's, this has happened to, like in the past year, that you can give me an example of?
Well, we were talking about the electronic signs and the last time we talked about it, and I know they're legal now, so if, if the dentist down by remains went away, someone else could have an electronic sign because right now they're allowed. But we also talked, if all of a sudden they weren't allowed, that someone new coming in would be allowed to have that same type of sign because, you know, we already allowed it by variance there, but, but we, this way we wouldn't. Like when, if the dentist's sign wasn't allowed and he now moves down the street, the new person that moves in would have to have a sign that conforms with the current bylaws if that passes at town meeting.
Is there another example?
Another one? We'll say someone asked for, I don't know. It's just I've noticed when I went through all the sign bylaws... Um, we'll say someone asked for, I don't know. It's just, I've noticed when I went through all the sign bylaws at every single town, they had, they're really adamant about getting their signs to conform. And I didn't see what the big deal was to add it while we're talking about nonconforming end signs. I mean, why would we want to leave the door open? Like, do you think of a sign that?
Well, let's say you have like, um, I don't know, you have a convenience store, right?
Yeah.
And it changes the name, why should he build a whole new sign that's, that's already there and it's working? Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, if the business is.
I feel like this is a financial burden on the, I don't know if, um, let's say you go down to Ace Hardware is. A lot of, some of those signs start to change because the stores change. Would that make it conforming to, if there was nonconforming signs?
I, I would, I mean, I have to, I'd have to think about this because I don't know, I, I. When you said the same exact thing, I haven't had a chance to think, you know, to really to look.
Yeah.
Into this. Um, but I, I couldn't come up with an example of a sign where, where we've had this issue. So, so I, so I don't have like an example to, to give.
I guess I found it when I was looking, and then we were talking about the electronic signs and what do we do if now they're nonconforming? How do we get them to conform? And that, that's just stuck out to me.
But I think free, the, the freestanding, um, single business signs, the, the digital media signs, like the one at Mo's or the one at Saint Bernadette's, can be treated differently because they are singular, singular business and not on the side of a building that houses multiple businesses. I think Michelle's point is a really good one. At Lowe's, if, if by some fluke, we passed a bylaw that says no backlit signs, and then Tommy Lowe sells his business to Joe Schmo, and Joe Schmo wants to change out the sign, he now actually has to have a completely different signage up there. Everyone else has got backlit, and now he's got.
Like a gooseneck.
The, the gooseneck lighting coming over a wooden sign, which makes that strip mall start to look ridiculous.
Okay.
It doesn't, it doesn't make sense to do that.
I was just bringing up because I saw in all the bylaws, so it's good to get that side of it too.
I think that we need to, it's something that we should certainly think about because there are opportunities to maybe curb some of the intensity in this town that comes through the electronic media. But, um, I do have a question about this. Was there more to this? Was there a D? A substantial D?
I can look it up. It was Westboro. I thought I covered a piece of it.
Was it Westboro?
Yeah, it was Westboro.
I'll look it up later. It doesn't matter. We're, I'm voting on it tonight. It's okay.
Yeah.
Thanks for, thanks for pulling it. I'm going to look it up.
It just came, yeah, it's Westboro, and it just came up because we were talking, well, what do we do with the signs that are already there? Are they allowed to continue? Are they not allowed to continue?
If you've ever bought a sign for your business, you know, they're really, really expensive. No matter what kind you get. For some reason, signs are really expensive. Um, and I just want to make sure that.
Just like framing art.
It is like framing art.
Why framing?
It is so expensive. But when you, so, you know, if, whatever we do for signs, we have to be cognizant of the burden that it places on the business owner.
Right.
That are in place today. Because that can be extremely difficult to swallow that expense.
When the businesses change hands, they, their signs go away.
So I'm thinking of some of the strip malls, you have businesses who actually change hands, right?
Yep.
So I'm thinking to myself, are those signs nonconforming? I have no idea if they are. Because a lot of those strip malls with the signage have been there since the seventies, eighties, right Kathy? Those malls?
Mm-hmm.
So I don't know if those are now classified. So to Teresa's argument, if you start changing them, then you go from, just looks odd. You know, if, um, you know, the little guy downtown who's got that cute little Packershire that people might not like, you know, but people might like the little Budweiser sign up above, and all of a sudden it goes from whoever it is to Joe's Packershire. Changing the name to Joe's Packershire, does that, I mean, the guy might want to just say, why can't I just be Joe's Packershire? Why do I have to now dunk down the whole thing and then conform? I, I don't know. It's just.
No, it's good to see that point because I didn't think of that point.
I mean, I understand the point of the digital.
Yep.
And then if I could just comment Kathy, on the digital, my concern is, and I think where the Shop's Way is, that's classified as industrial, right?
It's zoned industrial, but it was developed under, it still needed variances, but it was the, developed under the major commercial overlay district.
Right. Because when you look at Davis Street all the way to Route Nine, that's going to all get built out. I don't want to say no digital down there to where it's going to actually be digital because it's probably the right place it should be. And now they're having to go to the ZBA for variance, right? That seems to me a perfect fit for digital because now you're going to have all that property when the sand and gravel goes, when all that goes. That's a top, part of technology that is going to be, it's right at that highway district, you know?
Yeah, it, yeah, because I, you know, one, yes. One, one of the things that, um, that I have mentioned about in the master plan to, to come out as one of the recommendations is changing the zoning of that part of Route Twenty. Um, because right now it's a combination of industrial, and I don't think that there's any commercial down. I constantly say I'm going to bring a zoning map up here and never do. But, um, there's industrial property, then there's some residential property. But it, it makes sense to me because of how that, you know, once sewer was brought down there, um, you know, it's going to develop, it's going to continue to develop as commercial. So do we, do we call it highway business? Is it, is it a business south? Um, you know, that's something that we've got to figure out within the next year or so. And then I think, you know, the signs have to, you know, coordinate with that. So, so again, what, once we put that together, you know, kind of, I'll keep in mind of what, what it is that we should be rezoning that land to.
Which land again?
The, basically what we call the Southwest cutoff, from Tomlin Hill Road out to Route Nine.
Out to Nine.
Yeah.
Um, the, you know, the land that, um, that isn't residential, which is really kind of.
It's just a.
Southwest cutoff is like a misnomer. It doesn't go north to south. Sometimes it goes east to west, sometimes it goes north to south.
Right.
Um, it, you know, if you're heading west on Twenty, um, you know, the majority of that property is zoned industrial, but it's going to develop as commercial.
Right.
It's, it never will be industrial, and, I mean, the value is just too much now. I mean, the value of it is too much. That, I mean, it has to be commercial. Um, so like you were saying, you know, the, um, the gravel pit, when that goes, um, there's some, you know, like the storage facility. I mean, that's all well and good and serving a purpose now, but at some point, they're going to realize that the value of their land is, you know, you could probably sell this and, you know.
Right.
And find another piece of land that is a lot cheaper to put, you know, storage facility on.
When is the gravel pit scheduled? Are they scheduled to finish?
Um, it's, um, it's kind of a floating.
The last they came before earthquakes, they said they could be, they're just continuing business because business is good.
Yeah.
Um, they're continuing to mine it.
Yep.
But I think they don't even need to continue to mine it because they bring material in and out of there. And I think the last, I, I think they were thinking about seven years.
Okay.
So.
It's, it's.
Which makes sense.
If you ever, if you ever walk up the hill and you cross the street and you walk up the little grass hill and look down at this pit, it's like looking down at Tonka Trucks. It's so huge. It's massive.
Or if you go onto the back of Wegmans.
Yeah.
You drive behind Wegmans.
Oh, yeah, you can see it from there too.
Go over, yeah. It's pretty fascinating. You never know it was all there.
Oh, no.
When you drive by on, on Twenty.
Living on Hitching Post, you knew it was there because your front porch was always dusty. You have to wash that off like every two months, but, yeah.
So just before we close out signs, can we?
Yeah.
Can I just continue a little bit? So I just, I spent a little time going out at night, taking pictures. And I still think that, and I know Michelle was concerned about the backlit signs, you could see better, um, from the road and different things. So I just, I got some examples and I'll pass them down. And I'm not a great photographer at night, but I think, like, for example, Tony Abo's building down by Southwest cutoff down there, they're all frontlit signs. And they came, they're, they look really quite good at night and really visible. And I would argue even more visible than the backlit signs. So I understand your arguments, certainly because you guys are business owners and we don't want to burden people with additional signs. But I, I would like to continue the discussion about bringing some conformity to the signs certainly in Business East, West, and Downtown.
Anthony, do you have an extra?
Oh, sorry.
What's this one?
That's the bottom of dentists.
Oh, and the dentist, oh.
So Anthony, you just said Business West, Business East, and Downtown?
Yep. You know, and there's different towns, and I, you know, I think that Westboro has some specific bylaws around them. I, I know Southboro does where they're only, they're very specific about only frontlit, frontlit signs with the exception of Route Nine. So. I think if we're trying to add some consistency and make the town more attractive, it's something we continue to look at.
And I don't know because I'm not a business owner, but it almost looks on the front page with like painted, poured, and plated, paired, poured, and plated. And those signs, like, if you were a business owner, wouldn't it be cheaper to make a sign that gets lit with this light than it would be to make a backlit sign that lights up? I'm just curious. I don't know which are more expensive.
Uh, I have a tiny sign, right? It's wood. It's hand carved. I would assume it's something similar to what's here, only maybe a tiny fraction of the size. And it was almost twelve hundred.
How much was your backlit sign, Michelle? I'm just curious.
But on.
Which is more expensive? I'm not.
Yeah. For, for, for these signs, and, and I don't have a light on my sign.
Yeah.
So I don't have to worry about the elec, running the electric out there. I don't have to run and worry about putting in this type of a fixture, swapping out fixtures, and then doing the repair work to where a sign had been removed. And I don't have to worry about a sign this big. If I had to guess, and I think you're looking at at least, you know, seven or eight thousand per sign to do a swap out.
Isn't Two Seventy-Six West Main Street internally lit, the standalone?
The freestanding sign is, yeah.
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
Yeah, there, there's a combo out there.
Right. So that's an internally lit sign.
I think the, the only way you're going to get businesses to be able, just to, not even whether they want to or not, just to be able to conform to something like this, is they need financial assistance to get it done. So if there were, um, a, a change in the bylaw that sought more conformity, I, I think that the financial impact on the business owners is something that has to be part of that consideration. They do look, they do look fantastic. They add a certain amount of, you know, smaller town charm.
Yeah.
To the overall picture. But we weren't here when they were making those rules. So, you know, we got to.
Well, and your point is excellent too about, so if you're at Rocky's and somebody leaves, so you got now one sign that's conforming and the rest aren't, and, yeah.
Right. And there's, there's got to be a way, like, if that, if that's something we want, and that's what happens, there's a tenant who leaves, and we've got to be able to give, I would think, we would need to be able to give the property owner some sort of incentive, financial incentive to, or assistance, I should say, to make that happen. Because I can see how it would, it would break the bank.
And just to say, like, I think Northboro in their buildout happened in the seventies, so you have a tremendous amount of strip malls from the seventies, which is why, when you, where you have those backlit signs. I mean, the, all the, all the stuff that you're pointing out, Anthony, is the new construction over the past five years.
Yep.
You know, all the other buildings are the older buildings. And, um.
I'm going to have to drive by the, um, the multi-use across the street. Do they have backlit signs across the street at the multi-use? Or are they like?
And I don't know what we.
They're frontlit.
They're frontlit.
Yeah.
And I don't know what we did up at Shop's Way. I, I can't.
They, um, well, Shop's Way is a mix because they, again, used the major commercial overlay district, which, um, the signs are in, conform to the highway business. But, but because of the scale of that, a lot of those businesses, not all of them, and, and I would say the minority of them, uh, asked for, requested variances, like the Home Sense sign, um, is going to be larger than what's allowed.
Yeah.
But I think like BJ's and Wegmans, they, they all conform. And the other way, again, I'm not promoting this, I'm not saying this is the, the right way or the wrong way to do it, but, you know, if you were, if you were looking at this, you know, whole scale change that you wanted to make about signs in Northboro, you know, one thing to consider is to take it out of the zoning bylaw and to put it in the general bylaw. And that way, you know, if you're looking for conformity, um, then, you know, in the general bylaw, you put in the sunset clause. You can't do that in a zoning bylaw, but you can in a general bylaw where you say, you know, ten years from, you know, the adoption of this bylaw, everyone has to conform, you know, so businesses have. I'm just making up ten years, but, you know, I'm sure there's all kinds of, you know, statistics out there on, you know, towns that have done this about what's, what's a sort of good turn on their investment and, you know, where, you know, what's the, you know, the cost of a sign versus the, you know, time, ki- kind of like, you know, amateurize it. But, um, but anyways, through, so, so some towns do have their sign bylaw in the general bylaw. So therefore, there's no grandfathering. And, and there's a, um, it's usually cities though that do that, not towns. Any place that I'm aware of is a city that has done that. But, um, but again, that's, that's one way. If you're looking for this whole scale change and, you know, and everyone has to conform within X amount of years, then, then that would be one way to do it, is you take it out of the zoning. And the building inspector is still generally in charge of it, but, but it, it does, it comes out of the zoning bylaw.
Okay. Anything else, Anthony?
No.
Okay. Thanks for the photos. Um, they certainly give perspective. Amy, anything else?
Um, on signs in general or everything?
Everything.
Well, let's stick with the bylaws for a second. I have something to, um, discuss with the master plan, so if anyone else has anything to do.
Okay, anything. Sorry, anything else on signs?
Oh, none on signs, thank you.
Michelle, anything else? Kathy, anything else on signs?
No.
Okay, Amy.
Oh, yeah, I do have something for bylaw related though.
Okay, well, let's, I, I won't forget about you. Amy's got, Amy's got something about you.
Oh, no, mine goes to the master plan. This is, mine's after the bylaws are done.
Oh, after the bylaws, okay, good.
Okay, so Anthony and I went to a, a class on, what was it, last week? We went to a special permits and variance class. The class was fantastic. Pam, Pamela Brown taught the course. She's a lawyer. She's represented planning board. You know her. She said hello.
Yes, yeah, I know him, yeah.
She's represented planning boards and applicants, and she's also, um, grew up in that major of planning and has all sorts of accolades in the area. Anyway, the class was super interesting, and she brought up a lot of different case law that's happened over time and how it sort of morphed the special permit, the way that the special permits are viewed in court. And this is right at the rally, right? I'm sure you've either seen it or get what I'm saying. So one thing I was wondering is, would it, is there an opportunity for us to, like, do some sort of joint meeting with ZBA and take a look at our special permit bylaw? Amy, we don't have anything super big coming across this year. And look at, you know, then looking at other towns, those are really extensive. And ours, ours seem kind of vague if you look at the different standards. There's like all these, for example, Pam brought up adequacy, adequacy of town services, like stating things like that. They're not necessarily in ours. Or even little, um, word tweaks, like instead of saying shall, use may. So instead of shall, whatever the, the term is, um, allow, shall be granted, it's may be granted. So like little tweaks like that, and just looking at it as it relates to current case law. And, um, it was just super interesting. Separate from that, it would be great, I don't know if there is any budget or availability to have them come and do some sort of course for our ZBA and planning board. I, I, I learned so much. Maybe I'm late to the game. You guys probably have been here a while. You may know it all.
No, we, they're, they're definitely through CPTC, they, um, they, they do offer, um, courses. I mean, the same exact course that you took, but as an example.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you can do it on, on an individual, you know, townwide basis. You can, to, you know, help with the cost, you can invite, you know, two or three towns also, you know, when you do it as a, you know, but again, just to cut the, you know, help with the, the cost of it. But I can find out what it is for them to come out, you know. I mean, there's, there's a number of courses that they offer, but.
Okay. So I, I mean, I, I'm working to get some of the materials and they've recorded it, so we can share the video and stuff like that. But as it relates to the bylaw, um, back to the bylaw itself, so I'm wondering, is there an opportunity, or have we ever done it before? We actually have a joint meeting with ZBA and look at some of the bylaws that impact both committees, both boards, and just sort of update it a little. and just sort of update it a little bit, based on maybe what we've seen come through, or how we've struggled with the language, and have had trouble. You know, I, I know I personally went to this class because I struggled with interpreting, and I wanted to make sure I was doing it properly. And I wasn't clear on, you know, I didn't know that, um, there's, there is no right to a special permit, you can say no. Um, I didn't know that. So I, I thought it was really interesting, um, if, if we could, we had the opportunity to kind of take a look at that together. I don't know if that's ever been done, or if that's of interest, or, just wanna throw it out there. I don't know if you have anything, Ed, you went to the classes?
No, I mean, it was, yeah, it was very eye-opening, I mean, just understanding the criteria, where you can say no and/or judge, uh, an application. Uh, I think everybody in both the ZBA and planning board, if we haven't taken it, should participate in it.
Um, do, I, I don't remember, do we have a budget?
Um, we, yeah, that, yes, there, there's a, a meeting budget.
Okay. I can never remember whether we have one or not.
Yeah, I get, like I said, I have, um, I mean, and if there's, and if we didn't have it, you know, I can, I can, um, cobble things together. So don't, so that's not, don't, that's not a concern.
So then, why don't we start by asking the ZBA if they would like to participate in such an event with us? I think that's probably the place to start. We'd have to do it after the first of the year, obviously. I don't know that we would, because you're looking at two boards. I don't know that we would have anything ready in time for the twenty nineteen town meeting. But we could certainly, when, when's warrant, the warrant articles drafts are due, when?
Um, I'll add that to the agendas, just so that I've got the date handy. Um, it's usually February that internally, we need to get, you know, draft language to the town administrator.
Okay. So we would be, um, really tight on timelines, assuming that the ZBA, first assuming the ZBA says, yes, we think this would be a good opportunity, a good idea, whatever, then we could actually get a scheduled meeting within the timeframe. And then get language, assuming we find language that we wanna add or modify. We might be coming on a really close timeframe, but it certainly is an opportunity to start the process, in any event, so. Why don't we start by inviting the ZBA to the opportunity, and see if they would like to participate, and?
Yeah, I'm, um, I'm, they have their meeting in, um, uh, when is their next meeting? November, it's right after Thanksgiving, whatever that is.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-eight, yeah. Okay, good.
That's all I want to add, I think. That's it.
Anything else, Anthony?
Nope.
All right.
Amy, you're back on.
Amy?
I was gonna go back to the master plan, and, um, I think Kathy gave you the printouts, and I had come up with some goals. Or not goals, but we talked about the action items. Because I didn't make the last meeting, I thought they're gonna go over the action items, so, um, I went through my comments, but.
We have a copy of that here.
Yep. But, um, I feel as a representative to the master plan, not only do we bring information back to them, but we should bring our expertise to them, too, because we are the planning board. And we discuss land use, and housing, and I just wanted to open up, like, part of our map, part of our meetings to talk about the master plan, to make sure there's nothing we're missing to be brought forth in the master plan, or if anybody else has comments, like, if you read these action items and you think, oh, yeah, I think we should do this, we shouldn't do this, we should talk about this, I think we should all have time to discuss the master plan, and I don't know if anyone's had time to look at the action items for tonight.
Sure, I, I have not, this is the first time I've seen them, but Kathy, this kind of stuff is not stuff that we have to have in the open meeting context, is it? Like, so if I read this, and I was like, oh, you know what, this one's kind of weird to me, but I like this one, maybe we can rework it this way. Can I just email that to Amy, or do we have to do that in here?
No, you should be, you should be doing that in, in open meetings.
Okay.
It's not a public hearing, but it's, it's, yeah, it's open meeting.
Okay.
Um, so just, you know, the, the timeframe is, um, I mean, I agree with Amy, every, you know, this, you know, the purpose of all of the boards represented on the master plan is for them to take the information and bring it back to their boards. Um, so, the, um, uh, you know, just as an example, you know, Norm Corbin and, um, and Alex, um, Molnar, they, they, um, are on there from the, or, or Norm is actually, is on there from the, um, historical commission, uh, historic district commission. And so I'm, I'm sure they're bringing it back to their, you know, Justin Dufresne is on there from the conservation commission. You know, the intent is, you know, for him to bring back, you know, conservation-related, you know, they'll probably be discussing open space recommendations, and. So, um, but it, you know, we've just started that process, I mean, the, the group hasn't even talked about it yet. So, you know, there's gonna be plenty of time, so it's, you know, you're not under the gun to get this, you know, done by Friday. Um, whereas the master plan steering committee is supposed to be taking a first crack at it, you know, individually, you know, doing their homework, and then, you know, getting information back to me by Friday. Um, or their initial comments on it. So, you know, the, the steering committee themselves, the first time they're gonna talk about it is, is on January third, so, um.
Well, I was hoping we'd give a second meeting in December, if that would allow people have time, the planning board to go back and look at the action items, and we can. I think on the fourth.
Well, yeah, it, but just, I mean, even after January third, you're, you're not, look how long it took us, and rightfully so, how long it took to come up with the goals.
Right.
And the recommendations are much more detailed, and there's many more recommendations than there are goals. So, don't think you're up against this deadline of January third, you're, you're not.
Right.
And if you guys get through this on January third, I don't know, but I'll bet you, but I'll bet you something.
Getting money back from the, from the contractor, that's for sure.
This is not gonna happen. So, um, I mean, you know, how you wanna discuss it, and, and, you know, talk about it, you know, at your next meetings, I mean, that's, of course, that's up to you, but.
So what do we have on for the next meeting, besides two twenty-two West Main?
Um, you, you don't. Yeah, I, I was, there might have been another, um, special permit hearing, but they didn't file in time. So, um, you have that, you have the hearing for two twenty-two West Main Street, and then the, um, you know, continued zoning. I mean, I'm gonna have that on every agenda.
Okay.
Um, so, yeah, so absolutely December fourth, I mean.
Just, I think this, uh, there's not, there's not a lot here. Well, I shouldn't say it that way, there is a lot here.
Right.
But I think, speaking for my, especially when there's a blank page, two blank pages in the middle, it actually, like, shortens it up a bit for me. Um, but I do think.
Does it have everyone's?
I might just be lucky. Um, I think, um, that we should be prepared to discuss it on the fourth, for certain. And then we'll also have some town meeting stuff to think about as well. If we need to push into a second date in December, we can do that, but let's.
Okay, I'm just hoping people aren't rushed, like, we, a lot of times in the past, we had two meetings a month. So I was hoping we could, maybe going forward in the new year, or even next month, have one, have two meetings a month, go back to the two meetings a month, where one meeting is all about the applications, so we can focus everything on the applications. And the second meeting that month would have everything to do with planning. Like, say we wanna talk about the master plan, or the zoning bylaws, or even downtown development, you know, if we have ideas. That way, we have the time and we're not rushed. Sometimes these applications go so late, after the application, we say, do you have anything to talk about? But everybody's already so, you know, have already gone through everything with the application, that we seem to be, um, I don't know, it seems to me broken down into two different meetings.
Well, I, if, if the fourth is anything like tonight, this will be the only thing on the agenda.
Oh, right. But they're planning on coming on the fourth, right?
Well, we're planning on coming tonight, so.
One hearing.
You know, it's, um, it's, uh, it's, it's impossible to know. I don't know, um, I don't know, we can't predict how long that hearing will take.
Right.
But I, but if we, if we can't get through everything we need to get through, we'll absolutely schedule another meeting.
Okay, cuz I'd like to discuss some of it with the planning board before the third.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Nope, on subcommittees, before we wrap it up.
Yeah.
Um, design review is on, um, quick meeting on Friday morning, eight to nine, ending promptly. Nine, cuz I have business to attend to. And, uh, do we get anything from the applicant, the other applicant?
No.
So we may end at eight thirty, because one applicant hasn't submitted any, any renderings yet. So that's what we're going to do for our, um, design review.
Okay. Thank you.
Anthony, I had a question for you, cuz I was on CPC for many, many years. You must be coming up with your list, you guys have your list already?
Wait, that'll go out, it, it's, no, Anthony doesn't have, it's the answer for Anthony.
Well, Anthony's voice changed.
Um, so.
I'm always curious what's coming before the CPC.
Yeah, um, the hearing is probably gonna be in January, uh, not December this year. So, um, but the, those applications are going out by the end of this week.
Okay.
Um, the, you know, the, so everyone will get their PDFs, and then we'll schedule the hearing from there. Yep, so, most likely the beginning of January.
Good, cool. All right, anything else from this end?
No.
Anything else from this end?
Amy?
Anything else from Kathy?
Well, I just wanna, um, update something. Oh, I just wanna update it, cuz it was in the minutes, I know, and it's only two seconds, it has to do with special permits. But I just wanna update, so everybody knew, it has to do with the dog and the condition of ownership on a special permit.
Oh, yeah, we got something on this, so, didn't we get some, didn't we get something on this?
Well, we said in the minutes that we'd discuss it at the next meeting, so.
Okay.
There might be people watching, or who are in the audience that didn't get the result.
Oh, okay.
So, but the last meeting, we talked about whether or not you could put a condition of ownership or time on a special permit. And, um, it did come back that you can, you know, you wouldn't do it all the time, it's not something recommended all the time. But if you do find a case on a special permit, where you wanted to put the condition on the ownership or time, it can be done.
Okay. Did they do that on this application?
The, um, yes, they, they, um, said that it would run specifically with his company's name.
Okay. Other than with the land.
Yep, so it was approved, his dog, Walker Business, was approved. And, um, and yes, the, he has a specific, I think it's called Worcester County. And then, um, they, I think they even added details about, um, the licensing or something that he, I know, wasn't that cute? The licensing that he has, that, that he had put on his business card.
Okay. Cool. He's not allowed to do boarding?
Yes, he can.
He can do boarding?
Yeah, he can do boarding up to three dogs, in addition to his own dogs. I mean, your own pets don't, you don't, that's not considered boarding. So, yes, so that, so they approved that also.
Okay.
So anything over three dogs, by our zoning bylaw, is a kennel.
Okay.
I just saw a question about materials for next week, I'm sorry, December fourth. So, how do I get a copy of the, um, the, the plan, the A and R application to create five lots for the plan endorsed on July fourteenth, twenty seventeen? Is that filed with Andy? Can I just ask him for that?
The, um, Tony was asking, I'm, I'm sorry, Anthony, geez. Um, Anthony was asking me today for Tony's A and R. And I, before this meeting, I just couldn't find it, Debbie, once Debbie leaves the office, like, you know, exactly, where is it? Um, I even called her at home, for a thing. But, um, so she's gonna locate it tomorrow.
Oh, great, thank you.
And then I can email it to you.
Perfect.
The one, because I believe it was back in August, July or August, that an A and R was, um, you know, signed for that property.
Okay. It looked like July fourteenth, I don't know if that's.
July fourteenth, um, we have a sign-out sheet.
Oh, okay.
When they have to sign them, so, um, yeah, so that's, so we're checking on that tomorrow.
Perfect.
Yeah, we'll find that.
Anything else? I would happily entertain a motion to adjourn.
First, we wanna wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving.
Yes. Yes.
From the planning board.
And thank you to our two citizens for being here, thank you for coming.
Thank you for coming. We don't usually have an audience, so we do appreciate the sport.
Spectating is a, is a sport.
Is a sport.
It is a sport.
Have a nice Thanksgiving.
Yes.
And we make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? All right, job, you guys.
Now, we'll take a poll on what your.